Everybody all set? Well, the gang's all here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to ask everyone in council chambers to please turn off, or at least put on silent your phone and other electronic equipment. If you do need to take a call, please do so outside of council chambers so that you don't affect the hearing. Today's date is June 4th, the year 2019, and the public hearing of the Stratford Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order to hear those petitions advertised for this session. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, each petitioner or their designated representative will present their case to the board. When they have concluded, board members, which is us, will then have an opportunity to ask any questions we may have. I will then ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the petition. We just ask that all petitioners please speak clearly and directly into the mic. After all petitions have been heard, we will then recess to our administrative session. Interested parties are welcome to stay. However, only board members and staff will be allowed to speak at that time. And please be advised that no show of emotion, clapping, shouting, cursing, fighting will not be tolerated at all in these chambers. Thank you very much. And for our first application on the agenda, Ms. Young, will you please read for us, please?
Number 480 Wakeley Avenue, petition of Carol, forgive me, Morabito. All right. Seeking site plan review and waiver of the rear setback to construct a deck incidental to a single-family dwelling in an RS-4 zone. Hardship: non-conforming lot, setback line unusually close to house unlike all other homes in the zone.
Is there anyone here to speak for 480 Wakeley? Step on up. Please state your name, your address, and your affiliation to this application, please.
Hi, my name is Paul Cho. I'm a general contractor. I am going to hopefully be building the deck for Ms. Morabito. And my address, I am out of 5 Ryan Avenue in Norwalk, Connecticut. So, we have a situation where we're going to make, we would like to make Ms. Morabito's deck slightly bigger than it is right now. Her existing house is within the setback line of the property. Her existing deck is within the setback line of the property. Her shed is within the setback line of the property. It's on a corner lot where the back property line and setback line are much closer to the house than if it were a conforming lot. So, we would like to just beautify her yard and make it what, you know, she had hoped she can do when she had bought the house. She was not aware that it was a non-conforming lot. And she just wants to do a simple addition, beautify the house, increase the value of the property, really, without encroaching on anything other than a couple of feet of setback line.
And I'm Carol Morabito at 480 Wakeley Avenue, the homeowner. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? Ms. Streets?
Do we have the certificates of mailing?
Oh, they've been submitted already.
Yes, I have them here.
Thank you.
Ms. Cleary?
Are there any ramifications with the, it's in a flood zone?
I believe there was a, from the flood zone, that this is not located in the flood zone even though there's a babbling brook right next to it?
Correct. It was removed from the flood zone the year I bought the house, 2015.
Ms. Young?
Good evening. Have you, other of you seen the staff comments prepared by Jay Hibansky on your project dated May 16? I will give you a copy. From memory, I will tell you my question comes from something in Jay's report. I believe he identified, thank you, that there is an existing deck to be removed in favor of the proposed deck. And instead of being equivalent in terms of the setback, the proposed versus the existing, you are in fact further encroaching into the setback?
Mm-hmm.
And my question is, why not maintain the current encroachments? You know, maybe the deck is in disrepair and you need a new deck, but why not confine it to the same location that the current deck is in? If you could tell me if that was given thought and why you decided the way you did? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The current deck is actually not really use, it's so small, it's not usable. So, yeah, it's really more like a porch. So, there's room to walk out of the side entrance of my house, and there's room to walk out of the kitchen, but there's not even room to sit down. So, we call it a deck, but it's not really a deck.
A question for Mr. Hibansky. Do we require patios to conform to setbacks, or no?
No. Patios aren't considered part of building coverage, or they don't require any zoning permits.
And do not have to adhere to setback requirements?
Correct.
Thank you. One more question, if I may?
Absolutely.
Could you, for the record, perhaps you already did, but repeat your hardship? What's unique about the property that should allow us to have you vary this zoning regulations?
So, I didn't get into the hardship too much, but we had thought about just putting in a patio only because that doesn't have any impact on the setback line. However, Ms. Morabito has, how would you call your arthritis?
Oh, I, I...
No, no, no. I got it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you go back to what you were saying?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let.
Yeah, so I have psoriatic arthritis in my hip. So, there are times, and I take medication for it, but there are times when I struggle with stairs. So, my preference is to have, you know, my grill out there, to be able to cook out there, to sit out there and eat, rather than having to go up and downstairs to do that.
So, no disrespect to what you just shared. Hardship in the world that we reside in is what is unique about the property, not the property owner? So, I'm just trying to understand, maybe it's a lot configuration, a lot shape, something that you could just get on the record?
It's the lot shape.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, no, I didn't misunderstood, I didn't misunderstand. So, in the application, the hardship is defined as the non-conforming lot. So, the lot is at a very weird angle. There's that brook behind it. So, because of the wetlands, because of the fence that's there, because it's on a corner property, it really is just a very odd-shaped lot. So, there's, you know, it doesn't make it easy to do any type of construction. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance that has any opposition to this application? Seeing none, is there anyone present that is in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there a motion to close this application? Motion closed by Ron Hoedig, second. By Ms. Streets, all in favor? None opposed? Okay, petition one is closed. Thank you. Ms. Streets, will you please read our second item on the agenda?
254 Bruce Avenue, petition of, and forgive me if I mispronounce the name, Elizabeth Dalia, seeking a site plan review and waiver of the requirement to have a 5,000 square foot of lot area per unit to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling in RM1 Zone. Hardship: keeping the existing external and internal features of the building, convert the two-story, single-family residence to a two-family dwelling on the above property.
Good evening, ma'am and gentlemen. As you speak, please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Dalia, address 254 Bruce Avenue. I just recently got a house two months ago. Then, in the house, everything existed. There is two electric meter, gas meter, and basically, I just would like to legalize the house for, and using as two-family, because I would like to make my daughter move with me, who is right now in high financial problems. She's divorcing, and we would like to use the house as two-family.
My name is Gabor Datz, 78 Boothier Road, Turnbull, Connecticut, 06611.
Are you the contractor?
No, I'm just helping her, but yes, I do help her with the contract. But I'm not officially the contractor.
My English not too good, so I ask him to help me to translate if I don't understand everything.
That's fine, you're doing fine.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? Ron, Ms. Hoedig?
Yeah, my main concern after seeing the house and where it's located is parking. You're going to add another family on the house. And Bruce Avenue, which I traveled for years, is a tight street, and it's a main street. Your driveway is narrow, you have a dilapidated garage in the back. Would you plan on doing anything with the garage?
We have existing two-garage on the backyard. We have already existing two-garage, yes, two-car garage.
It, I'm sorry, it does have an existing two-car garage, and also in the garage, you can easily fit three cars next to each other. So, even though the driveway is narrow, it opens up at the back, so I don't think...
I know it opens up, yeah, I saw it.
I don't think parking, you know, it's enough parking without anyone blocking each other for, including the garage spaces for five cars. So, I don't think that would be a concern.
I just a question for Jay. They're allowed four cars if it's a two-family?
No, it's only required one parking space per unit.
Oh, one parking space?
One parking space per unit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Young?
If I understand correctly, we use the term "to legalize" as if the use is already in existence, but now you're seeking an after-the-fact approval?
She bought the building about a couple of months ago.
Six weeks ago.
Six weeks ago. And it does look like it was used as a two-family before. It does look like it has two electric meters, it has two gas meters, it has two, each apartment has two exits.
Entry, entries, exits, yes.
It does look like it's already been an existing, you know, it's been existing as a two-family, but when we look at the, when we looked at the, you know, the plans, I mean the zoning, then it was, it was a one-family.
Never was legalized as two-family, but was used as and built as.
Yes, we, we...
And everything existed there.
And did I understand your intent is to have your daughter be the second tenant, if you will?
Yes, she's divorcing and have young, and on this way, I can help her, she can help me.
And if you could articulate the hardship, the rationale for why we can vary the regulations that makes it unique to the property?
Every, if I don't know how familiar you with Bruce Avenue, but almost every single house on that avenue, it has the same lot, and they're already two-family houses. The house next to it, every single one is a two-family house with the same, same square footage, and they're already existing two-family.
In same lot, on same lot?
On the same block, every single house is a legal two-family except for this one. Even though it's been used as a two-family property for a while.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Hibansky? In Stratford, when we define two-family as opposed to single-family, I presume, but you can confirm, it's because of the presence of a second independent kitchen?
Correct. Well, Stratford, the zoning enforcement has always defined it as separate living quarters where someone could completely exist on their own with cooking, showering, and its own separate independent unit. So, but kitchen is a part of that, yes.
Forgive me for not doing my homework. Is there, are there two independent kitchens in existence currently at this location?
I believe so. The zoning enforcement officer, John Rosowski, I believe, did an inspection at, I think at the request of the applicant, right after it was purchased, just to assess what was going on there, and that's why the application has been brought forward. So, I believe, yes, there were, it's been observed, there are two kitchens there.
And just to make sure I'm listening to you, if they were to choose to remove one of those two kitchens, because perhaps mother and daughter can cohabitate with a single kitchen, would you still call it a two-family?
No. They'd have to remove the kitchen, the stove, potentially some of the interior doorways, and maybe some interior renovations to reconfigure it so that it doesn't fall back into the illegal second unit.
So, it's not just the kitchen, it's the kitchen plus, which distinguishes it from a single-family?
And I'm speculating, because I have not been inside, but yes. At the very least, it's the kitchen with some other minor alterations as well.
One more question, I got you on a roll. If the board were inclined to approve this, do we have the authority, in your opinion, to limit its occupation to a family member only in the second dwelling unit, which might have the ability to control the parking on site?
I'm not sure we would have the, I'm not sure that we would be able to restrict. I would say that if the board, I'm not going to answer your question and pose a different solution, I think. I think the better option would be to deny the applicant this application and have them come back and ask for an accessory apartment where that is essentially set up for a family member to live in. And that, I think, would be a better option as opposed to trying to restrict it to family only, the two-family.
So, again, forgive my ignorance, can you articulate the distinction between a two-family versus a single-family with an accessory apartment? If they hypothetically were to come back and say, "We want an accessory apartment," do they even need us? And if not, what do they need to make it so?
Well, without looking at, I haven't evaluated how easily they could go to an accessory apartment, but it's essentially, it's restricted to family only. It requires an inspection every year from our office. And the obvious differentiation between that and a two-family, two-family can be rented to anyone, and there's no real requirement for inspection from my office. There are criteria for the accessory apartment. First, it can't be larger than 400 square feet, or, I'm sorry, smaller than 400 square feet, or larger than 800 square feet. That's kind of a narrow window for an accessory apartment. Like I said, I haven't been to this house, but my guess is that the second floor might be larger than 800 square feet.
Perhaps one of our applicants knows the answer of how big is it?
They might.
Do you know the answer of how big is the upper unit?
Let's see here.
We can find out.
I don't remember either.
And it doesn't mean it couldn't be done. Even if the second floor is 1,000 square feet, you could potentially cut off 200 square feet, essentially make that...
I'm just wondering if on its face, it already qualifies if they were to ask for a different request, getting them to the same end goal?
That I don't know. Without seeing floor plans and evaluating them against the criteria, there's maybe eight or nine different criteria to allow for an accessory apartment. One of them is that you have to have, there's one entrance into the house. It can't be its own separate entrance, which I believe the house has. So, there would need to be some modifications in order to do that as well.
Did you find it, or no?
The floor plan, yeah, the square footage is...
I would have to calculate it.
Everything, and the floor plan is each fire, you find the floor plan there.
I don't have the exact number, but the first floor has the whole thing, the second floor doesn't have this part.
The floor plan is, floor plan is, here, second and first floor.
This would be the first floor, and this would be the second floor, the same exactly set, this room is missing. So, I could easily calculate the square footage of that apartment.
So, what we're hearing is the second floor is similar but not identical to the first floor. The tax card that we were just looking at suggests the first floor is the neighborhood of 1,000 square feet. Second floor maybe is a little smaller, so I think you're right, plus or minus, in the neighborhood of 800 square feet, but not quite sure. Last question, I'll then yield the floor to others. We heard our applicants describe, when I asked, "What is the hardship?" I believe I heard, it's what everyone else is doing in the neighborhood, everyone else has it. Is it your understanding that that is factually accurate? And do you know if they got it because they got variances, or their lot area was larger, or it was pre-existing non-conforming, or...
I didn't research every property on this, I didn't research any of the other properties on the street, but I did look to see what uses were there. There's a mix of single-family and two-family. I would not say it's all, it is not all two-family. There are multiple single families on the street, but it's a two-family zone. So, the fact that it's a two-family, the potential that it being approved for a two-family would not be out of character for the neighborhood. But neither is it going back to a single-family either.
So, I lied when I said I had my last question. Now, I have a last question. In your staff report, I don't know if you've seen Mr. Hibansky's staff report, I'll give it to you, you identify the petitioner has not cited a specific hardship required for the granting of this application. Have you heard anything tonight that would change your opinion on that statement?
Yeah, because my English is so not well, and I did not understand what I have to, and I come for the zoning board, ask, and he, it was no help. They said, "I don't have to say anything." I was really not understand the words, what is mean, I have to explain that, I'm sorry.
And I think the board members, the hardship is usually something that co-signers talk on, just in terms of the staff, we tend not to explain to people what a hardship should be. That's something that he will explain to you, you've got a nice little informational letter on the back of the application. That explains what a hardship is. But, I mean, just given the fact that your lot is 41 by 90, it's a non-conforming lot, although the applicant didn't know that. I mean, they do have a legal hardship that allows the zoning board to grant the variance. However, you're not obligated to do so. The house conforms as a one-family. You know, if it, we would be, as I say in the staff comments, increasing our non-conformity if it was to be approved, and essentially leaving the non-conformity as it is if you were to deny it. So, I think there is a hardship there, although they didn't state it, but that's okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Did you have this house inspected before you purchased it?
About what?
Did you have it inspected? Did you have a home inspector come and...
No, I got the house as is, the house was auction house, and there was sales as is I purchasing that way.
Because I'm also looking at the staff report and saying that the second floor is an illegal apartment. So, in reconfiguring this, you plan on eliminating that and starting over, or building from that?
Building from it, legalizing the second-floor apartment.
Yes, this is what the subject here, this is what I would like to...
We do realize it's an illegal apartment.
Yes, that's why, that's why I do the variance, because it was illegal second unit, and I would like to, that's why I'm here, to legalize.
And probably wasn't your fault, of course, either, but there wasn't a permit pulled on that addition either. You're aware of that, that there wasn't a permit, a building permit for that?
A building permit for the second-floor apartment.
Correct. Unfortunately, you inherited that.
No, we are aware we inherited it, and that's, we're trying to cure the problem right now. You know, but, yeah, she knows she bought the house as is, and, you know, we're here to cure the problem. You know, she doesn't want to use it as an illegal, you know, occupancy. She doesn't want to do anything illegally. That's why we asked for the variance.
Does the board have any more questions? Mr. Hoedig?
Yeah, I have one more question, and probably it's more directed to Jay. According to their plans, it would appear that their entrance and exit, the only one they have for the second floor is towards the rear of the building. Is there anything decided that there has to be two forms of egress on a two-family house?
I apologize. There are two forms of egress.
Yes.
There are two entrances from the front, there are two exits from the back. Each apartment has two egresses.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
And I would just answer, that's a building code question, although I think for one and two families, it does not require two forms of egress. I think it's once you get into the three-family range...
Oh, three-family?
Where they require the two means of egress for each unit.
Okay.
But that's not my...
No, I didn't know, I didn't know if it was any requirement from us, so, all right, thank you.
Does the board have any more questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone in presence here that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none? Is there a motion to take item number two, to close item number two? Motion to close by Ms. Young, second. Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor? Aye. None opposed? Ms. Cleary, will you please read our third and final petition, please?
It's 385 Oranoke Lane, petition of Jay's Custom Carpentry, seeking a site plan review and a waiver of the requirement that no accessory structures be located within 75 feet of a street line incidental to an age-restricted residence development. Hardship: pump is on an existing pad, must be covered to prohibit damage to electrical and pump system.
Good evening, sir. State your name and your address, please, and your affiliation to this petition.
Sure. Jay Abate, 9 Dempsey Road, I live in Ansonia, Jay's Custom Carpentry, and I'm representing Oranoke in this particular matter. They hired me last year to put a shed over this pump that they just replaced. It was there for 20 years, the problem was it rotted. They had to replace it, so they want to put a structure over it, not knowing that we needed 75 feet of setback, so...
Does the board have any questions? Ms. Young?
I think you've been in the audience since we started tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your patience. So, you'll know, we ask each of our applicants to identify, what is the hardship allowing us to grant you the variance, should we be so inclined? Can you articulate the hardship unique to the property conditions allowing us to vary the regulations?
Well, basically, they had this system that was underground, and it flooded, so everything shorted out, they had everything replaced, they bought a new pump and put it on this pad on top. Unfortunately, this pump that they paid a lot of money for, I guess, needs to be covered, so they covered it with a blue tarp. So, basically, I think the hardship is the fact that we need to have this covered, I think, is answers your question.
Did I also hear you say that we didn't know that there was a standard of 75-foot setback?
Not when this contract was signed. I didn't know until I came, 75-feet setback is a little unique, that I didn't realize. So, I mean, that's totally on me. But once we... But once we found out, you know, we applied for the variance and we're trying to get this accomplished.
Did a building permit get issued for this feature?
So we start, for what I'm trying to do?
For the shed?
For what I'm trying to do.
Yes.
So we started the process and we got past that part to where we got to the zoning and then I had to apply for the variance of the setback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none, is there a motion to close? Item number three? Mr. Hoydic, second. Second by Ms. Streets, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close by Ms. Young, second by, second by Ms. Streets, all in favor? Okay, none opposed? Okay, we will now go into our administrative session. Is there a motion to take 480 Wakely Avenue off the table? Motion by Mr. Hoydic, second by-
Yes, I'll make the motion to take 480 Wakely Avenue off the table. Just some comments I'd like to make first. After seeing the parcel and listening to the applicant's testimony, I don't have any problem with, you know, extending the deck and putting the patio down. It's a really irregularly shaped parcel. They don't really have a lot of land in the back. And in my mind, there is a definite hardship because of the configuration of the property. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve 480 Wakely Avenue because of the statement that I just made in terms of setback and, and the conformity of the deck.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Young. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, this is for acceptance of 480 Wakely Avenue. Ms. Young, how say you?
Aye.
Ms. Streets?
Aye.
Ms. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Hoydic?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Is there a motion to take 254 Bruce Avenue off the table?
Take it off the table?
Motion by Ms. Young. Would you want to make a discussion?
Now I'll wait for someone to second my motion to take it off the table?
Second by Ms. Streets. Any discussion?
I'll start a discussion, does not include a motion, but just want to get feedback from my fellow members. I was interested to hear the end goal, which is to create an opportunity for the current owner's daughter to occupy the building. And I think that gives some flexibility that otherwise would not have been available in the form of, you know, perhaps converting this building that was bought as-is into a single-family dwelling with an accessory apartment, negating the need for any zoning board of appeals relief. I'm personally very sensitive to the minimum lot size requirements to distinguish single-family from two-family. And when that's not present, I feel like, is there another path to get these good people to where they want to go? And I feel like, maybe not on its face in front of us, but it sounds like there is a viable path in the form of creating an accessory apartment. So I'm not, at this moment, until persuaded by others, feeling that hardship has been demonstrated to my satisfaction to allow me to grant this variance, but I'm ready to listen to others.
Any further discussions by the panel? Well, I had a, I did a review on-site and it's very odd configuration and I was just going basically on the fact that this person inherited a property that's got some abnormalities to it. I was also wondering if there was another path that, that I could be able to say with confidence I can go ahead and grant it, and I'm still a little bit conflicted. I'd be willing to grant as long as they would go back into compliance and making sure, I mean, the thing with the building permit, that could be fixable, but for the illegal apartment is, is one other thing. We certainly, I would like to see if there was another way that they could resubmit and have another configuration on that.
To that end, I heard Mr. Urbanski during our public hearing talk about if we wanted the applicant to further explore, is there another alternative? His advice to us was, we would then deny this application and that would allow them either to return and give us more information or even better, perhaps demonstrate to the satisfaction of the zoning department adherence to the accessory apartment regulations, in which case that would negate the need for us.
I agree. Any further discussion?
Mr. Urbanski has his hand.
Oh, sorry.
And I would just make the amendment to that, well, not amendment, but a suggestion is if the board was leaning to denying this, to give the applicant another opportunity to explore another option, to deny it without prejudice in the event that the accessory apartment option does not work, they are able to at least come back without having to wait the year and be, potentially be reconsidered, but they would still have to make the new application back to you. Just a thought.
Ms. Streets?
And I would just amend further Mr. Urbanski's amendment. If the applicant should return and seek to legalize the, the second unit, that they demonstrate what they have done to make that unit a legal unit.
Do you mean from a building code, do you mean from a building code compliance perspective?
From a zoning perspective.
So do you mean that if, let's say they went for the accessory apartment and that avenue didn't work out when they come back?
And they wanted to make it just a second rental apartment and it's now illegal. You know, they would demonstrate what they have done to make it a legal apartment.
Further amendment to the amendment to the amendment. I, if there's a path here for denial without prejudice and we're talking about things we might like to see if this applicant returned, it sounds like if they created their self-imposed restriction, we will limit this rental to a family member only, even though it may be a second dwelling unit, not an accessory apartment. I would feel better about that from the concerns of parking that we began this conversation with. And I think we could accept that condition if it's offered by the applicant. So I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice for failure to demonstrate adequate hardship. Anyone want to second my motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Streets. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
And one, aye.
Unfortunately, it fails.
I am sure Mr. Urbanski, after the meeting, could distinguish denied without prejudice versus denied altogether. One's better than the other.
What's that?
Denied without prejudice.
I, the motion that I heard was denied without prejudice.
Denied without prejudice?
I think the chairman just wanted to confirm that that was the case.
Is there a motion to take 385 Oranoke Lane off the table? By Mr. Hoydic?
I will make a motion to take 385 Oranoke Lane off the table.
I'll second the motion.
Second it.
Second by Ms. Young?
Thank you. I just want to make some comments, basically, after reviewing the site and going out there. I understand the applicant's concerns and his problems, predicament. The other 25 feet that you want to add on is not going to make a difference in my mind. Where the pump house is now, and if you move it back another 25 feet, really is not going to change anything with the conditions that are there. However, the only problem I have is, as Mr. Urbanski stated in his comments, is there's really no actual hardship that we can cite. I would have a hard time denying the application just on the principle. And I would not make a, I would not make a motion to deny it. But if someone could come up with a viable hardship or reason, I would be open to it. That's my comments.
If I may?
Ms. Young?
So my understanding is, even if the applicant hasn't offered hardship, if the members find hardship, we can issue a variance, grant a variance with the hardship that we find. So I would suggest public safety. I think there's concerns with pumps not working and if it's because they're not sheltered, I think it's a public safety hardship that they be sheltered in place. The existing condition already exists, so the hardship would be existing location combined with public safety, in my opinion. And if you were willing to make that your motion, I'd be happy to second it. Or, Mr. Urbanski, did you have your hand up?
And I just wanted to add that I think that, you know, this regulation is really in place for single-family homes so that there, we don't have garages and sheds in the front yard. You know, I think when we think about a golf course, there are outbuildings and sheds and refuge areas from weather, they're everywhere. So I'm not, you know, the regulations don't always fit every single use perfectly. So sometimes the regulations don't, they're not perfect. I'll just, and I just wanted to say that.
So I will make the motion to grant the variance, the hardship being the existing condition of the pumps and public safety.
Who have a second? Second by Mr. Hoydic. Roll call vote for approval? Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Streets?
Aye.
Ms. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Hoydic?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Ms. Young, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Streets, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any concerns or comments that any of the board members would like to make? Ms. Young?
I was reading the February minutes that we just approved and I was reminded that at that time, we had the town attorney with us and we talked at that time about Attorney Florick looking into ADA hardships. I just wanted to check in with Mr. Urbanski to see if that's still on the to-do list or if it was circulated, could it be recirculated, because I missed it.
I have not received the town attorney's opinion on it, but I will follow up with Attorney Florick tomorrow. See if he can get it to us for our next meeting.
Thank you. My other concern is really a compliment. At our last meeting, or maybe it was the one that preceded it, we talked about making some changes to our forms and our processes so that we get these certificates of mailing prior to, and it seems to be working well from my perspective. Is it working well from your perspective? In which case, bravo to you and your department.
Thank you for this suggestion. The pilot program will continue, if it goes well, we'll lend it over to the other, the other boards.
Any further items? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Mr. Hoydic, second? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.